No more comments. Welcome, everybody, this evening. Since there aren't any public comments, let's go straight to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of our last meeting, the minutes of our special meeting, the appropriations, and the late cabinet transfers for C-16, D-2, and D-3. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Been moved to seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Old business. We can go to the North Riverwalk Extension update.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys have been down Valley Street, but they had the majority of the pump pretty well done. They're working on the little parking area there to access the sidewalk. We actually went down there and sprayed that down with water today for them so that it could get packed. Lighting's still scheduled to happen this month, as far as I know, but they're getting close to starting to wrap that up.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is it gonna be, like, post-lighting along the sidewalk?
Yeah, exactly what we have. So...
Okay. Thank you. All right. Moving on to new business. Recreation Department appointments and pool manager training certificate increases. Okay. Appointment. At this time, I would like to appoint Evelyn White, concessions worker, at a pay rate of $7.69 per hour.
Do I appoint her separately, Mayor?
You think I should?
Yep.
Okay. So I would appreciate something, uh, motion to approve that appropriation, like, something, whatever. Sorry. Jared, did you extend that to me? Okay. Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved to seconded to approve the appointment of concession worker Evelyn White as concession worker for $7.69 per hour. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay. And then, moving on. I would like to appoint Lauren Carlson. Now, she's reappointed. We just need to increase her pay raise. She got her training and certification. The areas listed below: CPR, first aid, lifeguard training, and WSI training. Her certification is 25 cents. She currently is making $11 an hour. Her in-pay rate will be $12 at the hour, effective 7/7, with the approval of the council. So do I hear a motion to approve that?
So...
I guess I...
I'll second.
Jason? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And so that's just really certification of pay.
Yeah, so when we hired her, she... It's no different than when our old pool manager, we hired her, I think, $11. We asked her to move all these certifications and stuff, and she did the same thing.
Okay. So it's really not, you know, it really wasn't asking for approval of appointment, because she's already appointed.
She's appointed, yeah, just the pay raise for the certification she wanted.
Okay.
And similar to our utility workers, when they get a certification, they get a raise.
Yep, and we have one that's actually on engine.
Okay. We've got that done. For the office committee recommendation, I would like to take this time to appoint Amy Lev to the contract position of city custodian at a pay rate of $1600 a month. She's gonna clean the city hall, the fire department, and the rec center, the armory. And I would appreciate a motion to approve that appointment.
Do we have discussion for this second?
Sure.
Just a question. How often do they clean?
City halls every day, and then they do the trash and stuff at the armory every day and clean as needed over there. Then the fire station, I think, we're doing two or three times a month.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve that? Okay. Second?
Second.
Jason? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Amy Lev to the city custodian. All those in favor? Okay. Motion carries five to one abstention. Okay. We're doing some more planning here. Fire and police committee recommend that we appoint Victor Messi from Hartman Officer to full-time Class B police officer at a pay rate of $16.50 with a 16-month probationary...
Six-month.
16, did I say 16?
Yes, six-month.
Sorry, guys, I'm just flicking out.
I could all be 16.
With a six-month probationary. We'll make you wait 16 months. Okay. Do I hear a motion, or do I hear any questions first? Okay. Motion to approve that? Okay. Sharon?
Second.
Second? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay.
Listen, Hector.
Are duly appointed. Okay. Let's see. Now, we're gonna go to city merit raises. And these were based on performances and evaluations in the following departments in the following rates. The utilities department, Derek Craig, David Simmers, both have new pay rates. Do you want me to say the pay rates?
We can. I mean, he has a package, so I don't know, make it tick for the cameras or whatever, if you want to, Mayor.
Okay. Derek Craig at a rate of 28, just to be transparent. And David Simmers, 1428. Streets and Parks Department, new hourly pay rates, Jeff Barbo, $20.66, Brad Rafke, 1479, and Mark Mitter, 1428. Police Department, new hourly rates, Sean Wangerin, 2385, Raymond Zaller, $20.54, Jason Bacon, 1992, Jimmy Blackburn, 1942, Terry Liv, 1942. I don't see Officer Cooper on there.
He gets treats.
Extra dog bone?
He gets treats.
Recreation Department, Justin Carlson, $20.86. City Hall, new hourly salary pay rates, Nick Jones, $122.40 a day per pay period. Teresa Groob, $16.64, Laura Royal, $15.75, Megan Weaver, $14.47, and James Masters, $22.95.
Just real quick, Mayor, anybody that's not listed on there has either not been here a year or received a promotion this year already and received a pay raise without promotion, so they have a year under their belt for a probation period in their new position. So nobody was without a merit raise this year, so...
Or the ones that just weren't here long enough.
Right, yes.
Okay. So these are all recommended after their evaluations, as I said. Do I hear a motion to approve those merit raises? Okay. Keith? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Mayor, I might just add, so that the public knows that this... Nick has this in the budget. This was a budgeted raise.
Yeah, we had, we budgeted... So the only two that are not part of that budgeted raise are Derek and David Simmers. Their money comes from water sewer, which we sell, so that's where their money comes from. We budgeted $24,000. We had about 1,400 of that left after we gave raises, so...
Just so the public knows.
Yeah, so we're well... It was a budget item. Yep.
Thank you, Mark. That's good. Okay. Now, we're gonna do a utilities committee recommendation. The utilities department recommends appointment of David Simmers from Utilities Department Apprentice to the Water Operator One with a pay increase of $1 for the successful passing of the State of Kansas Water Operator One certificate. So his new pay rate will actually be 1528, effective July 7th of this year, and I would appreciate a motion to approve that appointment.
1528, right. I said 27.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. It's 1528.
Okay. Sharon? Second? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay. Let's move forward and go to the Belfry Con Underwash bid.
So I have two bids, one from Creek Construction, one from Hartman. Hartman, I met with both individuals up there. They walked it, measured, did all their things they do. Hartman's bid was $13,300 to repair the underwash, replace the pillars, and fix the curbing up there, it needs replaced. And then Creek Construction was $31,750. Part of what he has in there, though, is a pump truck. Pump trucks are really expensive to rent, so that's one of his expenses that Hartman doesn't have included in his, because he's not gonna use a pump truck. And then, let me see, what do we have? And he had different items for tear-out and stuff like that. Hartman just included it all as one thing, so those were the two differences in this.
You said Hartman's was what, Dad?
$13,300.
Okay. Thank you.
He's like a no-brainer here.
Well, I think Hartman said his dad's the one who fixed that originally. And it looked like what they did, everyone had informed, put forms underneath where the underwash was, and I think they drilled holes and backed all this, is what they did. And so Chris kinda remembers that, what his dad did, the first time they worked on that up there.
And he doesn't feel like having any problems with those ballards?
He doesn't. He said, yeah, I mean, he looked at them, he said, yeah, he has a good way of fixing. I don't know if you've ever looked at them, Lauren, but when they were originally poured, all they did was drill, take a piece of rebar and drill a hole, and throw a piece of rebar in the side of that concrete, and that's all that's holding that filler.
Wow.
So they went back and fixed some of them. His dad did when they worked on that over there, and they poured them all the way around.
One got hit by lightning.
Really?
It basically exploded. Yeah, my sister lives right there, and they were out on the front porch, and lightning hit it and it just exploded the top out of it. Got hit. But yeah, it's important to fix those, because, you know, all that streak and all that ballard originally was probably put in in the 1920s, so it's getting close to 100 years old on that.
Yeah, so... Any of the broken curbing stuff, he's gonna replace that. And they fixed the nine ballards, it'd be fixed, and then fixed the underwash areas.
We had a wreck, I think, two years ago. Somebody ran, ran right into one of them.
And that money would come from infrastructure, if you guys approve it. Whichever one you guys approve.
Okay. Anybody have any communications, or want somebody to make a motion?
I would move that we approve Hartman's bid of $13,300 for fixing the washout underneath Belfry and fixing the concrete ballards and curbs.
Your second?
I'll second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the bid, or award the bid to Hartman Construction for $13,300 to repair and replace with money coming out of the infrastructure. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Nick, I think there should be a little bit of money from that accident, that person who ran into it, I think was...
I'll have to look back. That's been...
I think in the minutes before, I think there was some chart, you know?
I don't know that we collected all of it, because some people ended up making payments over a length of period of time.
Okay.
So I'll have to all look into it.
Okay. Office committee recommendation. Did you go for city hall, Nick?
So, I think I talked to some of you about this. The black car I drive, we've been having issues with it. There's a problem with the transmission, and Alan and Jeff and them have been kinda looking at it, and they went online and did some research on that transmission in there. I don't know, it's an all-wheel-drive car, it has a centrifugal force clutch in it, it's a belt-driven. About 80,000 to 100,000 miles, it'll start going out, and mine started to make a bunch of noise, so it's probably not safe to take it on the highway. It hasn't went out yet. We just replaced the air conditioner condenser, the water conditioning system on it. It just continues to have some issues. We were headed to Andover to go get the new police car. We made it to about Mashdough, and the thing about blew up, so we had to come back to town and take the police car to go get the new police car. So I think the vehicle will be fine for around town, for the girls to run errands. We don't currently have a designated vehicle for them. The maroon Taurus gets used by the water department to run samples to saline in Topeka, and then the police officers use it to do their trains. That vehicle's not hardly ever here. So our girls are using their personal vehicles to do city business, so we kinda need a vehicle for city hall for that purpose. So, and I've talked to Bowden, Bowlen, and then Schwartzferrier. Schwartzferrier's the only one that's communicated with me about vehicles. And he's working with other dealerships to find vehicles. He's found two of them. He just told me about another one today that's different than the other one. The first one we found was a 2016 Chevy Equinox, it's about 60,000 miles on it. Price on that was about $18,000. And then today, they just, this dealership he's working with, I think it's Briggs, got it in 2018 with 26,000 miles on it, and I think it was around $24,000 for that one. I mean, it's an all-wheel drive, so...
How much money is in the equipment?
I probably wouldn't take it out of there, Mark. I'd probably take it out of administration, is where I would take it out. We have plenty of money in administration.
How much is in there?
Uh, let's see, $281,000. And we're only at 37% of our budget for the year, and we're in the seventh month, so we don't exceed that. What I'd like to do with the equipment reserve, the equipment reserve, the sweeper comes out of, which is $29,000 a year, and then we have that skid steer for the water plant. We actually, when I was doing bud, working on the budgets, we took a note on that in 2017. I think the interest rate is 3.2 or 3.5%. It's about $29,000 a year. We only owe about $18,000. So my hope is, at the end of the year, we have enough money in equipment reserve, we can just pay that off and get rid of some of this debt. So, but the administration has plenty of money to cover the cost of whichever vehicle. You guys decide.
Sounds like a good plan.
As far as having the employees who drive the other car, are they currently authorized, like driver's license, fraud, insurance, all those kinds of things?
Yeah, anybody that works for the city is insured.
Already done that already?
Yep, all that's insured, yep. So, I wonder if you're a city employee, you can use city equipment or vehicles, yep.
So that's, they got a standard transmission in it?
No, it's automatic. It's like a centrifugal force, kinda like a old high press.
It's a CV.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not, like, the Nissan Frontiers also have those transmissions, and it just winds real high until that clutch engages.
I think the old Nash fences used to have, though, so, rampers.
We got one that...
Yeah. They wanted to push, wasn't really well. Transmissions.
So, they changed the oil and stuff on it, 'cause it's one of the recommended things, that if it started making a whining noise, and they changed it, quieted it down a little bit, but it's still making noise.
I'm just concerned if it was standard, I don't, I know there's a lot of younger folks that wouldn't have any idea how to try out a standard, so...
Yep, there's a ton of them.
So, are you still thinking you're gonna stay in the $20,000 budget range, or...
Well, that's what I'm asking. I think that if it was my money, for the money, I'd buy the newer vehicle for, you know, a little bit more. I think you're gonna get a longer time out of that. Usually we buy vehicles with 50,000, 60,000 miles on them, and then you get them to 100,000 miles, you sure have issues with them.
What's the brand on the 18, again?
They're all the same, Chevy Equinoxes. So, I looked at, we looked at GMC Arcadias, Trains. The Chevy Equinox is very similar to those, it just doesn't have the high price point, because it's not GMC, so...
Tell us the years and the miles on them, again?
Uh, 16 had 60,000, and then the 18 had 26. And the difference between, the 2018 is an all-wheel drive, and the other one is not. It's just a front-wheel drive.
What are you talking, twice the miles on the, for $4,000, basically?
Yeah.
And the all-wheel drive?
Yeah, 4,500 bucks. You know, you have to approve 24,495, because we don't pay tax.
Does it have, still have any warranty on the drivetrain?
I think it would, yeah. Usually they come with a three-to-five, a five-year warranty on a motor and drivetrain, and it's way under the mileage, obviously. Now, the other car, probably won't, I had those one teeth on it, so...
I'm not familiar with this type of car. You said roomy and now, because that was one thing that you discussed.
Yeah, so that's the reason we were looking at the Arcadias and the Trains, because I have a train, and they have quite a bit of room in them. They're a lot, a lot more spacious. I mean, me, Keith, or Mark, or whoever, get in a car, I'm more shoulder to shoulder than that other car, so...
That's a pretty big trunk area back there, and that hatch down there, too, if I remember right.
Have you, have you seen Jeff Glosser's Arcadia?
Yeah.
Similar to that. So, maybe a little bit smaller, but very similar to that.
Well, it'd be nice if, like, if we go to conferences, if any of the councilmen were to ride in that car, it'd be nice to have a little bit more room.
Yeah, and I was thinking about that. You know, we had a conference in Topeka in October, so...
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or anything? Do I hear any motions?
I'll make a motion. Purchase the 2018 with 26,000 miles, roughly, for the 24,495, coming out of administration. I'll second it.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to get the vehicle from, for, from Swirfringer out of sales for city hall, the 2018 Equinox, 26,000 miles, for 24,495, out of administration. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. I was really doing those things.
Well, you should have been there, because I talked, I talked about, I talked about, the only person that got back to me was Rick. He's the only one that followed up and told me what he had a line on, so...
He's pretty temacious sometimes.
Well, I told, I told everybody the same day, like, Tuesday, by the fourth council meeting, so...
That's all you can do.
Okay. Well, we're to governing body comments, so let's start out with Keith.
Well, I had a couple things, but I, when I first got here, found out they'd already been taken care of.
Oh.
Hats off to Nick and the, and the street department, so they already had, we're on it.
Okay. Mark?
San Fe Trail 200 stuff here. Next weekend, not this coming weekend, next weekend, will be gunfight on San Fe Trail, and I've contacted the state highway department about closing Main Street.
Who'd you contact? Was it Joe Shaw? Okay, that'd be the guy you wanna talk to.
Yeah, I sent him a letter. 6:45 to 7:30, closing the 100 and the 200 block of Main Street. For the grand finale, there's gonna be a mock bank robbery uptown with every gunfight reenactor that's gonna be there, so what do you think, a couple hundred people? I don't know. I don't know, at least a hundred, maybe. Hundred people uptown, some of them on horses, and there'll be a lot of shooting, and we just think that some of the horses might spook, and we just wanted to give kind of a bumper area for a couple blocks. And then also, you know, the sections of Neosho Street would, would be blocked off, you know, north, north Neosho and, and south Neosho, because most of it'll probably happen in that intersection there. We still have some things to work out on which bank they're gonna rob, or if they're gonna rob both of them, or what.
That's Saturday, the...
Saturday, the 17th.
17th.
And I think that's supposed to start at 7 o'clock, and I think is when that's, is when the shooting, when the shooting'll start. And so, but I need approval from the council, even though I'm asked approval from the state, I need approval from this, we need from this, from the council.
Okay, you guys have any questions?
Is there anything that you need from the city to reroute traffic?
Yes, I've, I've talked to the chief about them directing traffic, you know, down, and he was thinking that they would just go down Wood Street to Hockaday to, up to Mission, and then back onto Main Street.
Yeah, he, I said something to him today about it, because you brought it up at a meeting this afternoon for lunch, and I asked him what he was planning on doing, getting some detour signs also, putting up some detour signs during that time period as well to help direct traffic.
We tried to minimize it to the least amount of time, so we're not shutting Main Street down for very long, but we just think it's for the best.
Sounds like it would be.
Yeah.
It'd be pretty cool.
Will, will larger trucks be able to make that turn at Wood Street?
Well, they do it all the time when they're lost. When they think, with the state highways, you know, it's misleading, and a lot of people turn right there on Wood Street thinking that that's 177.
I mean, school buses come out all the time.
Yeah, it should be all right. It's a little rough, well, actually, it's a lot rough in that one first block, but I think they can, they can get through there. Okay.
You talking about 7 o'clock in the evening, right?
Yes.
You said 6:45 to 7:30, correct?
Right, that's how long we want to shut it down for. I don't think it'll take that long. I mean, the actual, I mean, they're gonna go in, act like they're robbing the bank, and they're gonna step back out again, and there'll be a bunch of guys waiting on them with guns, and I think he was gonna try to do double banks like the Daltons did in Coffeyville, I think is what he originally hoped to do, but he's talked to Julie White at Farmers and Gerbers Bank, and she's a little, she didn't know about this or not, so I don't know if that's gonna get worked out or not. She also, he did say he talked to Tiffany's, Tiffany and...
Territory of all.
Maybe hanging a bank sign on the front of that building, and, you know, because they're just gonna step inside and then turn around and come right back out again. That's gonna be the grand finale. That's the, although there'll be a concert afterward, so it's really not, it's really not the finale, it's the finale of all the shooting, anyway.
Are they gonna be doing other things around town during the day?
Oh, yeah. In the park, there's, there's a full schedule. I don't know when that's gonna be put in the paper. Has that been put in the paper yet?
The week before last.
Of the...
But we'll have more.
Okay, yeah. Starts at 9 o'clock in the morning and goes until 10 o'clock at night, right, Sharon?
Yes, but during the daytime, on Friday, it'll be just the reenactments. They're actually practicing for their competition on Saturday, and then you'll see the same group again, but it's actual judged competition.
We're gonna encourage them to go uptown, and, you know, those who walk on the streets, and maybe there might be some shootouts on, you know, Main Street. Buck Taylor is coming, and there's gonna be a Q and A on, at 9 o'clock, right?
Friday and Saturday.
Right, in the amphitheater. And then, then Buck's gonna, on Saturday, be one of the judges for the competition. And then also, they're gonna be camping in historic period camp, campgrounds in Riverwalk Park, and there's competition on that, and Buck's gonna be the judge for that, too, so... He called me this morning, and he's, he's excited to come. He said, "I got, I got my outfit, I got my gun." He said, "He said it's rubber, but I got my gun."
In addition, in the amphitheater, as well as, that's all going on, right, kind of adjacent to the playground in that area, but then in the amphitheater, opposite times of when these reenactments are happening, there's individual first-person interpreters in the amphitheater, so it's going on all day.
Yeah, like Doc Holliday, and Brad Mastin, and all these.
There's, and then there's Polcat.
Oh, yeah. Professor Farquhar and Polcat Andy, they're a traveling medicine show that I found online, that they travel around the state fairs, and they do, you know, the old medicine show, they'll be performing. I think we're gonna have a couple performances a day down in the park, and then one up on, one on Main Street, so...
Cool.
I don't know, we're in uncharted territory here, guys. We've never done anything like this before. We don't know how it's gonna turn out. Two good bands on Friday and Saturday night, two well-known bands, Diamond W Wranglers, used to play in that Prairie Rose Chuck thing down, yeah. So, and then Three Trails West, who are out of Kansas City. They're very well-known, so... I don't know, we're in uncharted territory here, guys. We've never done anything like this before. We don't know how it's going to turn out. Two good bands on Friday and Saturday night. Two well-known bands, Diamond W Wranglers. Used to play in that Prairie Rose Chuck thing down, yeah. So and then Three Trails West, who are out of Kansas City. They're very well-known, so.
Sounds like fun.
That's what the committee's been working on for three, four years, so.
What's the admission?
It's $15 a day or $25 for two days, or you can buy a $50 family pass per day. And that can get your, if you've got lots of family, that that does include grandpa, grandma, aunt, aunt, that's the, you know, the immediate family. Yeah.
But if you have a lot of children, it can add up at $15, $15 a day, so.
And it's going to truly be a family affair. There's not going to be any beer sold. It's just, you know, just the good old times. We'll have a few. Hopefully, we don't know about the vendors yet. We're hoping we'll have some vendors.
There'll be, yes, there'll be lemonade and then another one that has a variety of different foods on both days, and Friday, the truck, the taco truck will be here, too.
And then there'll be some some crafts, people selling their their goods, you know, leather goods and and things like that, so. I'm hoping, and Sharon and I both, I think that we're hoping that this can become a yearly event. This could be something, maybe not necessarily this time of the year, but sometime, you know, every every year we could have this event and.
May I add this? Doc Hink, who is over by Allen, is one that's kind of set up because this is what he does, is his competition. And so as he was, I've said this before, but as he was telling us a few months ago, all of the people that were in it, and it turns out there was at that time 14, now there's 13 reenacting groups that are coming to compete. And so we said to him, Doc, you do this all the time. What's a typical number, you know, of people competing? He said, well, seven or eight. We said, and you have 14? Yeah. So it's really, it's for that genre of people who understand and just play in that, it's.
We kind of joke only think it's going to be the world's largest event that that's ever.
World's largest gunfire.
Yeah, we don't believe it's there's ever been this many anywhere in the country, so.
I guess Guinness has a anything in their book on it.
I don't know. Maybe we need to contact them about it, see, but.
It was interesting. He was kind of embarrassed to admit how how big a one he had pulled together. He's the one that's made these contacts.
And one thing about he's he's asked the campers to any fires they have in the park to have them, you know, a raised metal something, so there won't be any holes dug or anything in the ground in the park, so. There will be fires, you know, in these encampments, so. And he's spent quiet time at 10 o'clock, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's those nights. He's telling everybody that no more gunfire after 10 o'clock, so. So the police will probably be getting lots of phone calls. I warned Sean about it a long time ago that, you know, there's going to be a a lot.
We didn't hear anything on Fourth of July, though. Usually we hear some complaints about Fourth of July.
Really, no?
Wouldn't hear anything.
No, Fourth of July was pretty quiet around town.
It was. If you're somewhere over here, it wasn't quiet.
No.
Like quite a dark one.
But I know they the group there by my house, which I was out at the lake, I saw a video of a 10,000 ton firecracker rolled all the way down Belfry in the lip. And I think that thing went for a long time, so I'm sure you were probably hearing that.
I kept falling asleep and waking back up.
But that was fun to clean up.
They did a really good job, though. They, yeah, it was. It looks really good up there, so. Anyway, sorry.
See the headlines now? Bank robbery.
And then no cleanup, you know, if there's any horse maneuver, they're going to clean up after that. And in the park, he said their group would go through the park at that when it's over and make sure that horse maneuvers cleaned up, so.
Somebody's going to contact the FBI just so they know it's fake. Well, you know, you watch all these TV shows, you never know.
Well, we're hoping our our local officers will be able to.
Keep it in.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the street being closed for gunfire or the bank robbery? Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, still moved a second then to allow banks to be robbed on Main Street on Saturday?
All those in favor?
Post?
Thank you. And the other other thing, and I discussed this with with Nick at one point, about putting welcome flags up. We got the American flags up, but I just wondered if we ought to put the welcome flags up. I discussed with Nick is just leaving these things up all all summer long. We've got so many things going on this this year. There's no sense in having our guys go out there and put them up and take them down, put them up, take them down. Just leave them up. We've got just tons of different activities. You know, we've got the baseball tournament coming and Ladies Night coming up and all this stuff going on.
Car show and.
Car show, yeah.
Run the weekend and.
Right.
And does anybody know if the welcome flags are in decent shape?
Yeah, they're fine. I actually talked to Jeff. They're going to do that this week. It's okay. We talked about leaving American flags out till after Fourth of July and then putting the welcome in and.
Just leave them all up.
Well, I I agree because it's a lot. It's pretty time.
I mean, that just might be the council probably needs to vote on that, but.
Yeah. I mean, we'll spend a whole, you know, four or five hours doing that.
We usually don't put them, the flags up and down. I mean, we we can, you guys.
I think it's a fine thing to do. I mean, the plan is to put them up, so. Jeffrey is right.
It makes the town look really good when they're all up.
Okay, anybody have anything else to add to that? Okay, is that all you had, Mark?
That's all I have.
Okay, um, Mark Burner?
We're going to get them flags. We don't need to vote on that or anything. Just get it done.
Yeah, let's do it.
Yeah, I don't have anything tonight. Sorry, I was late.
It's okay. Did you get it taken care of?
Mm-hmm.
Larry?
Uh, the only thing I was curious about was some things that I'd seen in the Council Road newspaper over the last couple of weeks. One of them more recently than others, and I didn't know whether anyone on the council or the city had any intention. The most recent that I've seen was the legal announcement having to do with the flood plain for Morris County.
Yep. Now, we've seen it. James is aware.
Okay, it's it's published. They have a website. We went, see, this is the entire Morris County, which includes Council Road. All right.
Yep, so James has been going to those meetings and been to all the webinars and all that stuff.
Okay, well, I just wanted to give somebody a heads up here because there's going to be a lot of people in the county that are maybe surprised, but the other thing was I couldn't determine which one of the publications in the paper for the tax sale. Was right, there were two publications.
That's a formatting issue. The second one is the correct one, actually. The first one got jumbled somehow.
Okay, well, I was just curious, you know. I couldn't find the other one to compare the two. I looked at, tried to look it up this afternoon and things to see what the difference between the two. I know the first one I read had to do with the parking lot up on North Neosho. And then also on the 20-foot section down on South Fourth. Then Kenny Bookman's house over on Oak Street was one, not that's no problem on the cities.
Yeah.
But I was trying to see between all those, some of them they dropped off. Some of them were dropped off in the very first publication. But we've gone through this once before over these tax sales that they were publicized and then they were taken off and I was just curious since that. City owns two of the properties. I didn't know whether anybody else was aware of that or not.
Yeah, we talked about it. Bill actually called me when the council agreed, I think there was $22,000 in taxes on 14 Neosho Street. And we've already spent over $100,000 over there.
Oh, yeah.
And I just can't see.
Surprisingly, I thought it was 30-some thousand, but they they gave us a break.
No, they didn't give us a break. I tried to get them to give us a break after we got it all cleaned up. Because we inherited that. We, there was a way to get the taxes, rid of the taxes on that before we took possession of it. And it didn't get looked into or so it didn't get taken care of.
Right.
So that we took ownership of it with the taxes and the county just decided.
Did a bankruptcy.
Right.
I don't see anybody buying it.
Well, I mean, there's, I mean, you may get Christie Davis for parking or Catlins or Max, Neosho Plaza. I mean, they won't they won't give you a short.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think anybody will pay.
And. And.
But they don't, all they're going to do is make it, they're going to make it highest bidder, so they give you $100,000.
But there is material buried under the ground.
Yeah, they can never build anything there.
That would have to be removed with permits and things before anything structurally can be built there.
Right.
So let me ask you this. Let me ask you this. An individual buys that and then gives it back to the city.
That can happen. The the there is one little caveat. It can't be something that's been can't it can't be a collusion type thing where, you know, that it's arranged for somebody to do that. But if if somebody buys a piece of property and then decides later just to make a gift of it.
And we're just talking here, right?
We're just talking.
Okay, so if a councilman up here bought it and gave it back to the city, would that be collusion?
Not as long as the, not as long as he hadn't been designated or was acting as an agent of the city. If he just acts on his own, completely on his own.
Yeah. Curious, we'd had another issue with another property around town. Now, even if it's quickly to somebody, which is what I'm thinking you're referring to, they have to notify them of the buried material underground and have it notarized.
I I think that depends. In the situation we're talking about with this parking lot, the city's already aware of that.
Yeah.
That that probably would not be an issue, but I just want to be sure that we're very careful here because it can't be, it can't be a situation where I I don't pay my taxes. I get my first cousin to buy it for a dollar.
Yeah.
And that clears off the $20,000 worth of taxes. Then he turns around and beats it back to me, so I get my property back free of all the taxes. And, you know, as long, but in that, even in that situation, if my cousin just did it on his own and didn't talk to me about it and just wanted to do a nice thing, then, you know, it's probably, although it's very suspicious looking, and I would not be surprised if it happened that certain authorities at the county courthouse, I don't want to say Bill Casabon's name. You know, might be snooping around on it. But uh, but yeah, if it's entirely a spontaneous deal, there's no agency involved, that that would happen.
Okay, when you say agency.
Me- meaning when you are a person that's being acted on the authority of, in direction of.
Like the city council.
The city council or or the city.
You guys tell me you go buy it individually and then give it back to the city. That's what it's talking about, so.
As far as, and I mean, I would I would personally expect that that's not going to sell very much. I mean, we've had some of those properties since Chase County sold for 50 cents. It's the highest bid, cash and hand paid.
Yeah, and we originally approved pretty signs and a lot of stuff over there, and I told Jeff to stop. It was going on sales tax. There's no need for us to spend more money on it over there, so we didn't. We didn't put gravel in there and we didn't put signs up because if it's going to sell, there's no need for us.
Have to get that all cleared out first.
Yeah, and and we can invest more money in something we're going to.
The way that works, Mark, is that after the, there'll be somebody there the day of the sale, maybe the county treasurer. It could be anybody really. He clears people to be qualified buyers. And that's based upon whether that person has any unpaid taxes or not. If the person has unpaid taxes, then he's not a qualified. He can't participate in the in the auction. If he qualifies, then he can bid, and then after it's done, then somebody will collect all the information. And then the county counselor will submit a motion to district court to approve the the sales. And that would be the time that county counselor would make his argument that, if he's going to, it's sort of like a wedding, you know, speak up now or forever or whatever it is. If he's going to make that argument, that would be the point where you can do that, so.
May I ask another question? Okay, there were two notices. I don't know, is that property still part of the second notice, which is correct? Or did it get, in the first notice, it was disavowed?
I don't know what's going on.
See, that's that's where I'm at. I I couldn't find my.
Should be the.
Yeah, I couldn't find my second newspaper notice.
Do you know what day that was?
The second and the ninth.
I believe it was Wednesday or Thursday last week.
Although I have all the papers in my office.
Okay, but that's what I was curious about because I thought in the first notice that that was one of the properties along with Kenny Bookman's down on Oak Street. There were about four of them that were listed under exceptions in there, and they gave the descriptions and everything of the exceptions. And I thought that one over there, the parking lot, was one of the exceptions. But since I couldn't find my second newspaper, I wasn't quite certain when it was on the second listing or not.
We can look after the meeting, Larry. I have I have a lot of papers in my office.
Yeah, I was just curious because I thought it was the first one.
And Bill called him personally and asked about it, and so.
Casabon and I had several conversations.
Okay, that's that's what I wondered about, whether we were discussing something that was never going to happen.
No, it's it's going to happen.
Okay.
You know when?
That was my question.
I, that, I don't even know if it's been determined yet.
Yeah, it's July the 30th, 30th or 31st.
It was the 30th.
Yeah. Yeah, it was printed in both.
Yeah, I think it's.
For the end of this month?
Yeah.
30th of July, did you say, Larry?
Yeah.
I hate to see us lose control of it. I mean, we've invested a lot of money into that parking lot and have somebody else take it where it can't be public parking. I hate to see that happen, but there's no.
Well, for whatever it's worth, Bill thought, and he knows what Bill knows and what he doesn't know, and he thought that the the apartment building to the south was probably going to be interested in buying it.
I mean, they'll partner in the last, so.
Yeah.
Well, to the south is.
I'm sorry, I meant to the north.
Yeah, he's he's, his wife's like your friends.
He's also wild, yes.
Be a good spot to.
I was foot camper story. But I was just curious. Those were two things that were in the paper that I had seen and hadn't heard brought up in a council meeting this evening, so.
Well, you said that the one property doesn't really affect the city. I'd have to disagree with you. The one over by the Sound Rock, if that gets sold and cleaned up, that definitely would affect the city, all the problems we've had with that one property.
Is this the stuff to the east of the Sound Rock?
Yes, Bookman's there on Oak Street.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure that it didn't get dropped off the list again. See, that's that's what that's what I'm saying. I didn't find my other newspaper, and I apologize for this to see which ones were still on the delete list.
You know, anybody can come in and pay those taxes right after the day of sale.
Oh, yeah.
And that.
The one that I think is what, 40,000?
If that might explain why some were taken off.
Well, it was on the sale before, and they said they had an error in publishing, so they took it off.
Okay.
So it's it's been on the auction sale once before. So has the Stella. Yeah, I don't think it's on the auction sheet this time either, but no, that's.
Still wasn't on there.
Yeah, yeah, I, see, those were the things that I was looking for.
Yeah. No, I talked to Bill about that as well, and he he indicated to me the county has no plan to ever take action on that. The city has the right to collect its taxes. We want to look at doing that. We're not going to be able to look to the county, and I'm not sure exactly what the explanation for that is, but.
Can we put it up for an auction because of our taxes?
We can collect our own taxes by sale on that. Now, there's a whole process.
If nobody bids on it, then we're stuck with it.
What'd you say?
If nobody bids on it, then we're stuck with it.
No, the owners, whomever owns it today would still be the owner.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it doesn't sell.
Change. We can't locate the owners.
Well, you can acquire jurisdiction by publication.
Yeah.
So it would still be possible, but it's a whole process. It'd be the same process as if you're enforcing taxes on the entire county, like with all the publications and all, even though it's only relating to a single property.
Right.
So.
But basically, the city would still wind up with it.
Well, no, there are.
What if you can't find the owner?
No, we could we could still acquire jurisdiction to sell it based upon.
Right, well, to sell it, but if nobody bids on it.
Then it just stays with the owner.
It just stays with whoever the unknown owner is.
The cost of summoning it, just something the city put out and nothing's changed.
There would be some expense. You'd have, you know, probably.
Well, but there might be somebody locally here who might want to buy it and 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 try and try to do something with it. I don't know.
You know, you're probably be looking at seven, eight hundred dollars.
Health expenses. Especially after the last one.
I don't know, maybe.
Sure. Situation.
It's something to kind of think about. At least there's that that option's there.
No.
Oh.
If.
As we go on.
If somebody were to approach us and say, if I could get ownership of it, I would clean it up, then we could then we could put it up for sales.
Go through that process.
You have to go through the process.
Right.
The process takes several months.
Right there, yes.
So it's not an instant.
Okay, deal.
You got to start off by filing a lawsuit and send it to service or public. You know, you gotta start off, I found a lawsuit, and then send it out to service or publication, and then then you have to have motions for default judgment, and then when it's actually done, then motions for orders for sheriff's sale, each one of these steps involve publication and notices.
Okay. All right, go ahead, okay, do you have anything else, Larry?
No, that's the only two items that I wanted to bring up, which was in the council road newspaper.
All right, Jason?
I don't have anything.
Sharon?
Well, I'd like to just say thank you to the city crew for picking up the limbs all over town. I think that people have appreciated that, and it's just a good service that, that the city provides, and so. And I appreciate the crews because they did it, so.
Absolutely.
And also, it was great fireworks, again, kind of patting ourselves on the back because the city, but Jason did an outstanding job with fireworks, and I think it was well enjoyed by a lot of people, so I enjoyed it a lot. And the last thing is just be sure and come and watch the gunfights, and we're gonna have, because we're gonna have a good time down there on the river walk, so. Positive stuff.
Yeah, good stuff. Okay, kind of going off on the same thing. Um, the, I just wanted to thank the law enforcement people, they did a great job of moving the traffic out of fireworks. We had to wait a little bit, just a few minutes, but it was good, it was really, guys did a good job, pass that on, please. We appreciate it, and I have a lot of people say that they were really pleased with the way it was handled, so. So good, good, good event for us, always is. I have a question, and I, I probably could bring this up just to Nick, but while I'm thinking about it. We were talking about working up over there on Khan. You know there's a leak underneath that house on Columbia and.
Rocky Hill.
Yes, and it goes, there's really, that's really leaching into those bricks and stuff.
You're talking about, well, it's not a leak, you're talking about.
Underground spring or something.
We've looked at it, we've looked at it every year since I've been here. Um, and depending on when it's wet out, that thing runs and then it doesn't run, it's no different than the one on Mission. You know, the one on Mission's not running right now. Um, but that one that Adam has under his house, he's had it looked at to see if he could do something. When it's wet out, it pumps eight to ten gallons of water or minutes, or something crazy like that. Um, but it's a natural spring, the only thing, you can't kill a natural spring, so I don't know. I don't know what the answer is, I talked to Derek about it, Derek said there's not much we can do on our end to do anything about it.
There's a solution, but it's not a solution.
Right.
Solution is to put it down or sewer.
And you can't do that, because then you're treating, then you're wasting money treating groundwater and not sewer water.
Right now it's going into our drainage, right.
It's just going up and down into our storm.
Destroying the street.
It is destroying the street, that's a concern.
Um, well, it's no different than, I think, the one on Mission, water sits on the, on that.
Well, at least it goes in the gutters on Mission, this one's running across the street.
Yeah, I just don't know what the answer is to it.
I just wondered, I, I've had a couple of my neighbors ask, and I said I'll bring it up.
Yeah, James has been over there, Derek's been over there, Adam's had people come look at it. There's just not, you know, we talked about, talked to him about putting a cistern in, but it's got so, it's pumping so much water, a cistern wouldn't hold it.
It's too bad there's not an old well in that area, and they could just put it back down in the ground.
Yeah, we've went, we've looked at it and looked at it, I think he has three garden hoses running out of his basement, pumping that water out, that's how much water there is.
Well, one of the neighbors, and we were talking, it's too bad we can't somehow hook it up, water our yard, here we are watering our yard. Water's running down the street.
I'm sure he lets you hook the hose up.
Not if it would work, but it's a thought.
Hook a hose up to one of his hoses, I'm sure it'd be fine with that.
Well, I said I would bring it up, it's my house.
I mean, we look at it every, it comes up every year, so, and we've looked at it ten different ways, and there's just not a good answer to it.
And there'd be that, you know, a storm drain could be put in up there at that corner, the block, that'd be incredibly expensive to, to do that. Since there's not even one down at the bottom of the hill.
We need to put in a neighborhood spray block.
Yeah.
Okay, Bill, do you have, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, I'd like to do the city budget work study on eight to five, that's when Cindy's available, she's gonna be out of town next week.
You're talking about in two days?
In two days, yep. She would like to do it Thursday if possible.
We have a friends that call Heritage Board meeting at five.
Yeah, that's what meeting time, otherwise we have to wait to do it. Now, I've already emailed Chelsea with the revenue neutral rate, you have to email them by the twentieth this month to tell them that you're going to exceed that. There's some stuff with the avalorium tax and the property tax, they're gonna go back and look at it, because they don't think it was calculated correctly, if I'm being told. So there may be a change in that, which is why Cindy's recommending you go ahead and notify the county, which I did today, that we will exceed the revenue neutral rate. So, because they got rid of the tax list, I don't know if you guys are all aware of that. Um, so there's a difference, it's the kind of the old process that you guys used to do when you wanna raise a mill, if you have a public hearing at the same time that you're having your approval of the budget, you have the public hearing and then your approval of the budget. That's all.
Is the city still allowed to go to the one mill or?
City can do whatever they want to, you guys just have to approve it, so if you guys wanna raise it.
Okay, that's, that was my question.
Yeah, the cap actually is gone, yeah, that's gone, that's gone, cap's gone.
The cap on the mill limit is gone, but I think they've still got some restrictions.
We do have some, you can't, you can't be, it's crazy.
Basically, what they were trying to do was realization that if you dysregulate the mill rate, that, as property values go up and down, it's gonna cause but instead, they've got this, this idea, this revenue neutral thing, where it takes out all the ups and downs of the change in valuations and looks at just how much money you're raising. But I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that you still can't raise it over a certain amount.
Yeah, I think police and fire, like before, the one ones, um, they even.
Yeah.
Do above and beyond what you're allowed to. And with our budget, you know, we got Cindy's looking through it, and she looked through it today and sent it back to us, and she's gonna look through it again tomorrow. But the only thing, you know, our budget that's sort of changing is police. Like I told you guys the last time we talked, that when the councils before added a seventh police officer, they never budgeted for that police officer. Well, Shawn needs that now, um, because we're gonna be full staff with the addition of Victor, so that, that was one of the changes in there, so pretty close.
Plus, we need to look at the possibility of a CVB director too.
Yeah.
That's changing for that. Is there a way that we could do that meeting at six o'clock instead of five that would allow?
She has, she has a meeting in White City at seven.
Well, this is kind of tough to dump this right on us like this.
But if it doesn't work, we'll try to figure it out another day.
We have, we have other commitments.
But I don't, I don't know everybody's commitments, that's why I'm bringing it up, so if I, you know. If you can't do it, you can't do it, and we can try and do it another day.
Oh, is she gonna be gone, did she say?
She's gonna be gone all next week, we, we can wait till last week in July and do it, so. But we don't have to have our budget hearing. Um, the first day you can actually have it is August twentieth, that'd be between August twentieth and October twentieth, I believe. So, um, so we can wait a little bit longer, she was just wanting to get it done, because she's still gotta do the audit. She's starting to work on audits now, so she's trying to get all the budget stuff wrapped up.
So you need to find out when she's available, Nick, and then reach out to everybody, is that?
Yeah, that's what we do, if it doesn't work, that's fine, I'll, I'll order it tomorrow and talk to her. And that actually gives me a little time, and I can send you guys the, the budget, so you can kind of look through it and ask questions before that meeting. But there's, it's pretty self-explanatory.
There you go, it's for the twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth.
Who do you want to meet? It's Tuesday, Thursday.
What was for me?
Between the twenty-seventh and twenty-ninth, it's okay for me.
Twenty-seventh, twentieth, twenty-ninth.
Twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth, I'm open then too.
I'll confirm it with her tomorrow, and then I'll send an email to everybody.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, I just brought it up, because I don't, I don't know everybody's schedules, so I barely know my schedule sometimes, so. So then, the last thing is, the street department talked to me today, there's bag worms on some of the trees on the river walks, and the big tall trees are like fifty, sixty foot in air. Jeff is getting some pesticide, and then we're gonna put stuff in the fire truck that we have, and some of the things that we have, we'll spray that high, and we'll get in the trees. So if somebody in the public says there's bag worms on the trees down the river walk, it is true, but we're getting it taken care of.
Oh, and our mosquito fogger, is it broke down?
No, it's working, it's been working, we sprayed over.
Somebody told me it was broke down.
We sprayed.
They were over there by Durham Park here last week.
Yeah, so we sprayed before we tried to spray, but Michael Martin Murphy, and we got told not to by the people that seen, because they didn't want that stuff in there. So they told us not, Jeff went down there to spray after hours, to spray back there, we bought a hand sprayer to spray behind the stage, because we couldn't get the truck back there, and they told us not to. Jeff's like, okay, well, I won't do it. So, um, but we sprayed before WeShum today, we sprayed the park before WeShum days, we sprayed over there before Fourth of July, so, yeah, it worked, so.
Yeah, I've seen them, I talked with the guys when they were at spraying with the sprayer in the back.
We actually parked down there Sunday morning down at Bolton Complex when Jeff was down there, so.
Okay, good.
Yep.
So you tried to do it the day of an event, or?
The evening, the evening, um, I wonder was he doing that? So, I think the fence got put up, we had that hold up, we couldn't drive the truck back through there, so we're looking for a way to do it. So they went and bought, they found, Adam's actually had a hand sprayer, a fogger, and we went and bought that, and we did what we could do. But behind the stage and stuff like that, they wouldn't allow us to do it.
Yeah.
The deal is done, you tried to do it pretty close to the event.
Right, yes, yep.
Well, we're gonna have campers coming in on Thursday night, so.
Yeah, and we've been spraying, we sprayed down there for WeShum today, so we'll spray again, so.
Okay. And unfortunately, it looks like we're losing a bunch of trees in Greenwood Cemetery again.
Yeah, we got some we gotta get removed, we need to get it.
Yeah, looks like there's at least three or four of them that have died.
Yep.
Can we expand our memorial tree?
Yeah, I suppose we could, uh, we probably let, who's, who's on the cemetery committee?
I don't even know that we have a committee for that one.
Is it parks?
Do you?
Parks. They probably need to decide if they even wanna plant trees in there before we.
Yeah, we actually, a lot of people complain about trees over there, because they fall on the headstones and leaves hole and all that stuff, so. Or they get roots and then pushes up the headstone.
Are you better to?
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have anything else? Somebody wanna rush into a dirt?
So would.
Move, can you move a second? Okay, move to the second end to a dirt.
All in favor?
Six zero.